What do we have logged in from planning staff?
Um.
Hey, guys, I'm here and I think Dylan is here as well.
Okay, so who's our host? Is it you, Peter?
It's actually Dylan. I'm not there yet, maybe next month.
Okay, when they log on again, who's the host? I remember we got the email from Dylan. Log into, but sometimes I know with staff that may change from time to time.
Yep, I'm hosting this one. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay, no problem. So I got just about 6:30. So I'll give it one or two minutes, Dylan, and then we'll get started, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'd like to make sure everybody's up to snuff before we go on record. Okay, can I have your attention, please? I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for May 17, 2021. The first matter on the agenda tonight would be the approval of the minutes for the April 22nd meeting. Any board members have any corrections or comments on those minutes for the 22nd meeting of April?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 22nd.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Motion's made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Those motions, that motion is approved, those minutes adopted. So moving along, we have a matter that's been continued a couple of times to get some traffic studies, which is a special permit and site plan review for 60 Fletcher Street. Kazanjin Enterprise has applied for a site plan review and special permit approval to rehabilitate the existing structure on the above address and convert it into a bank in an office building. The property is in the urban mixed-use zoning district in the downtown Lowell Historic District. The conversion requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 to modify a parking lot with more than 14 parking spaces and a special permit approval per Section 12.4G2 for the proposed drive-through teller. As mentioned earlier, this matter's been around a couple of times our last couple of meetings. The matter was continued at the request of the applicant so we could get a traffic study completed. We have received that, but this time I will turn it over to the applicant. If we can hear my applicant, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I was the board for the record. My name is Brian Malisi. I'm with, I've been associates with the civil engineers on the project. What I'd like to do is kick it right over to Mr. Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering, who developed the traffic study, and he can go over that a little bit. And then we can take some questions and go on from there. Can I tell you?
Thank you. As Brian said, I am Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering, and we prepared the traffic impact study to look at the renovation of the existing building on the site to include a small branch bank and some office space. We did the traffic study following state guidelines. We went out, we got new traffic counts done. We adjusted them for a couple of things. A, COVID volumes are still a little bit lower than normal. And normal, we don't know what the new normal is going to be, but volumes are still down a little bit from free pandemic conditions, I'll say. And then, secondly, because of the Lord Overpass construction, we had to adjust our volumes to account for certain closures that are ongoing right now that will reopen and the traffic flow will resume once that construction is completed. So we looked at several intersections in the vicinity of the site. We looked at the intersection of Fletcher and Dutton Street and then Fletcher and Suffolk and Rock Street, as well as our site driveways. We're proposing to have two driveways, both coming out on Dutton Street. We call one the East driveway and one the West driveway. And we'll focus more on the East driveway primarily in a couple of minutes. We looked at future conditions horizon. We contacted the planning staff. We contacted the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments to find out what would be the appropriate background growth rate to use for our projections and if there are any other projects in the immediate area that we need to include in our traffic projections. Based on what Northern Middlesex Council of Governments told us, we ended up using a half a percent growth rate compounded over seven years. And there were four projects in the immediate area that we included traffic from, two of them residential and two of them marijuana-related. So we included the traffic from those projects. We got them from either the IT generation manual, because in most cases, none of the background projects had their own individual traffic study performed. We looked at what our project's going to generate, and we have just a shade under 21,500 square feet that will be office space. And the branch bank, which is just under 4,000 square feet, will have one drive-through window, which is located external to the building within the parking field, not out on Dutton Street. So we, for traffic generation purposes, we looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. Current edition is the 10th edition. They are looking about updates and I'd expect an 11th edition, maybe in about a year or so, give or take. One thing we did do is we looked at the traffic generation, as I said, as a branch bank with a single drive-through lane and the office building. And based on the IT data, which I believe is a little conservative compared to what the branch bank has given us for data for what they expect to have for customers. If they have these numbers, they're, they would be ecstatic probably. So we're talking about 84 trips in the morning peak hour. A trip is one car coming in and another car going out. So cut that to half of the total cars, basically. And 84 to 104 trips in each, to the respective weekday morning and weekday evening peak hour. Historically, as some of you may know, that was formerly a hardware store-type facility. McCrittrix Industrial, as it was called, industrial supply. And just, we put a comparison in there. Granted, it's been vacant for a while, but just to give you an idea, that generated 33 trips in the morning peak hour and 75 trips in the evening peak hour. So we're not too much higher than that realistically in terms of what our overall traffic impact would be. We looked at the analysis of the study area intersections. We don't have a really big impact, but what does happen is in the morning, and it's not necessarily created by the Duncan across the street, but there is a queue that builds up on Dutton Street as it approaches Fletcher Street. And we were concerned with how that operation might affect our easternmost site driveway. So we took a look at the site circulation and basically the parking lot, which is totally ensconced on the site, is triangular, roughly triangular in shape, pretty much, kind of, with a little parking field on the east, on the, let's call it the south side of the building, which would be for bank customers. So what we've agreed, what, we talked to the bank and what they've agreed to do is to restrict all their exiting traffic from the bank, the people that come into and go to the bank. They would be forced to turn right into the parking field and circulate around and exit the site by way of the West Site Driveway. The only traffic that would exit out of the site through that driveway would be drive-through traffic. But the drive-through window only is open from 8:30 to 4:30. And that is just a 15-minute overlap with the morning peak hour. And there's no overlap in the evening peak hour. So there would be no traffic exiting at that point during the critical peak hours, which would help solve any issue of someone trying to get their way into a queue and block traffic on Dutton Street.
And can I just ask one quick question? I don't want to interrupt, but.
You just did.
I know, but I'm the chairman, so I can get away with it. We received the site plan today from Brian, and if we could take a look at that, because what you're talking about is what we've seen today. Brian, is there any way you can put that up? So when Ken's talking about it, we can see the flow?
Yep, I didn't want to interrupt. I was gonna say, I have it all queued up and ready to go.
Could you put that up while he's talking? Because I think that would be helpful. Because I'm trying to look at mine, and obviously it's a little small, but if you don't mind putting that up, and then if we can go back to Ken on that.
Can you let me know if you see it?
Yeah, okay. Does that help, Ken, if you could, when you're talking, we can at least see that?
Yep.
So when you're talking, so if you could just go back to the part where you talked about the flow of traffic from the bank and take it from there? I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Brian, you've got to control the cursor, right?
Correct.
So then you can, you can cursor while I talk?
Absolutely.
The, as I indicated, there's basically, it's kind of like a triangular-shaped parking field with the drive-through located at the eastern end of the site. North is down, the way the plan is oriented. So east is to the left, and that's where the drive-through lane is. And it comes, you, vehicles that would want to go into the drive-through lane would, it would be signed to enter through the westernmost site driveway, and the vehicles would then come down and enter the lane and queue up as necessary to wait for their turn to use the teller window. Now, as, if you're exiting that site, you can see we've made some modifications to the little parking field at the northeast corner of the site. You can see the arrow in the pavement, which is supplemented with signage saying, "Right turn only." So that all the traffic that would be in that little parking field would have to turn right, circulate around the parking lot and go out the West driveway. Brian, it's, it's really tough to see on this plan, but there are little signs, guide signs per se, to direct motorists how to exit the site. And as I indicated, only traffic that would go out this driveway would be from the drive-through itself. And since I said there is pretty much really no overlap between when the drive-through lane would be open, 4:30 to, no, 8:30 to 4:30, there would be no overlap with the peak hour traffic flow. So there wouldn't be people trying to turn left into any queue that may or may not exist on the Dutton Street approach to Fletcher Street. We did a queuing analysis as well, based on expected operations by the bank. They expect most of their activity to occur at the drive-through window, pretty much between 8:30 and 11:30 in the morning, where they could expect a maximum of up to like 10 vehicles per hour through the drive-through. And this is based on operations at their other facilities. The rest of the day, it is, it's not as heavily used. So we ran, like I said, we ran a queuing analysis, and with the length of that parking, that drive aisle, I'll call it, the five cars can queue in there, which is what the 95th percentile queue calculation worked out to be. So it wouldn't back up, it would back up right to the, where the entrance driveway comes in, if you drew a line perpendicular to it. So it wouldn't, the cars would be able to enter into the parking field without having to get stuck in a queue from the drive-through lane. Excuse me. So, and of course, we looked at site distances, and site distances coming into and out of the driveway are adequate. And I think that's pretty much everything. And I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Brian, you want to go back to you, or do you want to go next?
Sure, yeah, no, I just, I just, the other thing I wanted to point out about, about the site plan is we were also asked to look at some pedestrian flow within our site. And I think there was a comment brought up about maybe a pedestrian connection from Cushing Street onto the site. And what we've done is we've added a, excuse me, we've kind of extended and added some sidewalk and some crosswalks. That's it, there'd be a pedestrian stair, you know, somewhere at the most opportune location on Cushing Street. Here, there are a couple retaining walls, but we could add a pedestrian stair. And then the sidewalk was kind of continued, and if you follow the cursor, you come down northeast, in front of the back of the building, cross over the parking field here, and then onto the existing sidewalk system along Dutton Street, Fletcher Street. We did look at kind of adding a, that type of pedestrian access in this location here. But we kind of thought about it for a little while, figured, well, if there's a stairway here, you're really walking right up into the parking lot. And if somebody were backing up, obviously pedestrian traffic going on, it may not be very safe. And while it's very hard to see on this plan, the retaining wall that we show has a little bit of a crook in right in this area here. And the architects were, when they were working with some of the historical people, there is a doorway or a window here that they really wanted, they did not want us to block up. So again, by adding a stairway here, which may be a good spot to put it, from the architectural standpoint, we chose not to put one there. So again, listening to the board and some of the concerns, we did add that pedestrian walkway through the site, connection from Cushing Street down to Dutton Street.
Okay, yeah, because I think looking back on the notes from February 18th, a couple of the questions obvious was the traffic and the impact and the volume. Then Caleb brought up about the pedestrian safety on Cushing Street. Mentioned possibility of a bike rack. One of the boards mentioned landscaping and also snow storage.
So the, excuse me, I'll scribble that down. So we have plenty of opportunities for bike racks. We could put one over in this location here. We could put one at the bank over here. So we could certainly put that in, and I don't think Alan would have, would have an issue with that. Part of the package that we included was a landscape plan. We put as many shady trees and whatnot as we could. There's definitely some room for, for snow storage, you know, although we, 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 we pretty much cover the site with parking. We do meet the zoning code as far as offsets and whatnot goes. There's some opportunity for some snow storage here and kind of along some of the outskirts here. But like anything else with some of these tighter sites within the city, if we do get a lot of snow, they're going to have to do some snow removal from the site. And again, we've landscaped, we've greened up every spot that we could, all the islands, all the perimeters. I don't have that plan queued up, ready to go, Mr. Chair, but there was a landscaping plan that still fits the site with the original package.
Thank you. Anything else you want to say, Brian, or anybody else from, with your team?
I don't think, I don't think member, member Gallagher's on the call, but I know she had a question about what we're going to be doing to the exterior of the building.
Correct.
And that's why I think, hopefully Alan can kind of chime in on that, because I know there was a couple of questions on that.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Alan Kazanjin.
How you doing? How are you tonight?
Very good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
As far as the exterior of the building, we plan on keeping it pretty much the same way with the historic commission. We're going to do some, some wall work on the stonework and also the brickwork, which is, we see some cracking and we need to do some grouting here and there. But basically, it's gonna, and we're going to replace the windows.
Yeah, because you have to go before the historic board, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we're actually working with the historic, with the federal tax credits and things like that. And Steve Stoll has been involved, so.
But they'll have a lot to say on what they want for the exterior of the building?
Oh, absolutely, 100%.
We know that from Mr. Lockout, who sits on that board from, as a representative.
Yeah. We've been, we've been in touch with Steve when we first started this project a number of times, and I know he's been out for a little bit, but he's, he's been aware of what we've been doing. Like I said, we've, we've hired someone to work with the federal and state on the tax credits. So we're, we've been going a long way. That's been, that's one of the things that's taken us so long on this project.
Yeah, things don't move as fast now with the pandemic, that's for sure. People in and out of the office and trying to reach everybody.
As far as the snow storage, like Brian mentioned, we do have a little, some space for some snow storage, but we have the equipment. If we have to move it offsite, we'll take care of that.
Hey, anything else for the applicant before I turn it over to the public? Hey, so with this, nothing further then? I take it Alan or Brian? No, at this time?
Nope, nothing right now.
Most of it, thank you.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'm going to turn the meeting off to the public. And anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. This time I'll turn it over to the board members.
Maybe I will speak first.
Sure, go ahead, Caleb.
Oh, thank you for Brian and the applicant to, to consider some of the suggestions to make on the pedestrian connections. I think having a, a clear, I guess, defined and also accessible path through, pedestrian path through the projects is a, is a great revision. And, and I appreciate the thought that went in there. And also regarding the opportunity to add a bike rack into the mix. And I understand the challenge with the staircase. And I, with the staircase, you said that it might block the historical feature. And I, I think the historical feature would be an important consideration. Not, notwithstanding that you have been working with the historical board on that one. So I appreciate the, the attempt to address that. So that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, absolutely.
So, once again, as Caleb mentioned, I appreciate the, the revisions that were put into the, the site plan. I'll give you credit, that was a voluminous traffic study. You know, understanding the challenges with COVID and the Lord Overpass and trying to estimate volumes, I honestly, even with a pay review, I don't know if there's going to, there's a perfect way of capturing that. My, one of my biggest concerns, even at the original hearing you have addressed, I just felt that a left-hand turn coming out of that, you know, the, the bank parking lot was just the proximity to that eastern, most eastern entrance with the people exiting from the drive-up was just going to be a little bit too much going on there. So I do appreciate that. I think that was my, one of my biggest concerns on the site relative to traffic. I just, Brian, if you could go into that design of that triangle though, I think the biggest challenge or the biggest thing is going to be to make sure that's designed in a way that, is that going to be elevated or is that just a marking that's on the pavement?
The way this plan represents it now, it's a painted feature.
Yeah, it's not going to work.
It was really painted for, you know, snow, snow plowing purposes and snow removal purposes. And again, I called for it to be painted, to hopefully have some discussion about it with you guys. You know, there's a couple of other options we could do. We could put some scored concrete in there. We were trying to avoid having to raise it, you know, full six or eight inches like to match the curb. However, obviously, that's going to make or break a favorable decision. We can certainly do that.
I mean, it's the only way it's going to work. I mean, I can tell you that the cars are taking left-hand turns on the Westwood Street coming out of the other Lowell Five site that we looked at, and we, we put signage that said, "No left-hand turn." I can tell you the cars are turning off of Middlesex Street onto the Wood Street Market Basket, where we put, "No left-hand turn." I mean, I'm watching those sites and, you know, the, the most unappreciated person in the world is a sign maker, unfortunately. You know, and the only way that's going to work is if that's elevated. Otherwise, it's not going to work. So.
We take it.
I mean, from my perspective, I, it has to be elevated. And again, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, and it's difficult with the size of the plans, but it looks like the lane width is pretty substantial coming in and out of there. It looks like it's, I don't, I mean, Alan, I'm not, I'm not an expert at plowing by any stretch of the imagination, but I mean, is, I, those, the lanes appear to be wide enough that you should be able to clear that. Your thoughts?
Elevated.
Yeah, so that, that triangle, you know, the, coming out of that parking lot, that would be the customer parking lot for the Lowell Five, is exactly right where the cursor is. So that we, it would ensure that cars exiting that have to take a right-hand turn. If that's just a painted surface on, on, on the pavement, that's just not going to be effective. It's not going to be a deterrent.
How about if we put some type of fencing or, or some type of guardrail there or something? To that effect?
Well, I mean, would, would, wouldn't the, I'm thinking that we've done this before with the raised curbing for an island there. I think.
Sure, shouldn't be a problem, yes.
Yeah, I think that would be, and I think that would look decent, and it wouldn't be up high to, you know, obstruct anybody's view. But obviously, it would deter the cars from being able to take a, a, a left out of there.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, because we did the same thing on Thundike Exchange. We did the same thing on, with the, on Rogers Street, where the, the new marijuana place is going up. I mean, it's the only way you can go. So that would be perfect. If we could do that, that would be great. I got, you know, I'm looking at the landscape plan. I think you've, the only thing is you lost a tree or two with the sidewalk going in. If you can try to find a place to, to, to replace that, I guess, that would be work with DPD. But I certainly see the placement of the other, the other trees. I think you've covered it with about, just about every spot you possibly can. Question for you, I know the discussion came up, and part of the ZBA approval was to work on securing additional parking for overflow parking. Have you had any success with that at all since the February meeting, I guess?
No, we really haven't. I don't, I really don't think we'll have a problem.
I know they've made it subject to review in, in six months. I just.
If we do have that problem after six months, we'll address that and we'll do what we have to do. And then, um, thank. It, it could, could you just go over the, I guess, Brian, where the, the other thing is the signage for the ATM, just to direct people to that western point of entry here. I guess if they come in through the east, and worst-case scenario, they go through the parking lot and loop back around, right?
Right, so the, the idea is, is when they come in through the east of the driveway and they secure a spot here and do their business, when they go to leave, and the island here, it's not really the island, but it's, it'll be a grassed area where the sidewalks kind of come together. It'd be a sign here that said, you know, "Right turn only, no left turn." So there'd be signage right here. Along, I put the painted arrow there, because it kind of shows up on the site plan a little bit better. If we had the full sheet, you could see it. So it would be there now. So, and also, and I, and I talked to Ken about this, we kind of went back and forth. Now, now we take a, you know, someone who came up and parked in this field here. If he wants to say, start to leave and skirt out that driveway, again, in this island here, there'll be a "Do not enter, right-hand turn only," and I show you this, where this is here. And I show you this, where this is here. So they'll also be signed. If he starts to sneak out here, he'll be signed to get to wreck it out to the Westley driveway as well.
And, and again, that motion doesn't bother me as much as coming out of that parking lot because right to the left, you get cars coming right in at you. And you got the, the exit in, uh, of the ATM. So that was, to me, that was the biggest, you know, the trouble spot on that, on that lot. But I guess what I was asking too is for the ATM, because you want to encourage people to drive through the, the Western entrance, right, to get through the ATM? Are, are there going to be signs along Dutton Street, I guess, to, to direct people ATM entrance? Or how, how is that going to work?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt you real quick? Uh, the, the drive-through window is only going to be a drive-through window. There will not be an ATM there.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I guess I missed crazy, but that, that, in which the, the way the cars will get there, how will the signage be, uh?
Yeah, we'd have to, uh, we'll have to add a sign on this island here that, that'll direct, you know, uh, drive-up color window to the Westley driveway. And we, we, and we'll sign that as well here.
And a sign that says ATM entrance, some, uh, whatever you want to call it.
Drive-up tower entrance.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Because again, if you're telling me that's your intent for the flow, if there's no signage directing people to do that. And again, I, I, I guess you'll have a percentage that'll still take that first entrance. They'll just, they, they have the ability to circulate through the back rear of that parking lot, come scoop around.
They really do. Yeah. They come in and they can get into the queue this way. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, no, we made, we made a lot of progress on that. Um, and, uh, it's exciting to see that building come back to life. Uh, you know, I mean, it's, uh, I, I think it's going to be a, a good project, especially once the, uh, the Lord Overpass is, is completed and the, the intersection of, uh, of Fletcher and, and, uh, Dutton and Thundike Hall is, is greeted with the direct connection into the, the Hamilton Canal District. I think it'll be a, it'll be a nice spot. I know we talked about originally some sort of a landscaping there at the, at the corner of Dutton and Fletcher. I think that's pretty difficult to achieve.
Yeah.
It's, it's difficult. And I, and I think even in the traffic study, talked about leaving for the site and keeping that clear for the site line. So I understand that.
So from the, we hopefully captured on the site plan, but from the, the architectural standpoint, you know, there's a small 18-inch ivory tanning wall here. Uh, they adorned it with some, with the wrought iron, black wrought iron type of fencing to, to, and the historical people really like that part of it. So there will be some lawn, it, it'll be some, you know, some soft scape there. Maybe not some large trees or anything.
Right, right.
But the edge is really going to look nice.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vichet. Any other board, any other board members have any comments, questions?
I have a, a couple of questions.
Sure, Mr. Lockhart.
The pedestrian traffic across Dutton Street, there's a Dunkin' Donuts somewhere over here. And even over, uh, on Fletcher Street, there's a laundromat and a, a dry cleaning service and tailor shop. Is providing any crosswalk type of controls in either location?
So there, there's an existing crosswalk here. And, and with this heavy, heavier dashed or heavier hatched area here is the, the realignment of the sidewalk. That's part of the, the city's project. You know, Alan gave, gave the city an easement as well as a temporary construction easement on that corner in order for them to move that sidewalk and widen out that driveway just a little bit. So there's an existing crosswalk here that, that's, that's still remained as part of the city project. Um, and, and you're right, uh, you know, Mr. Lockhart, there, there was talk originally, and I think Fran had brought it up, brought it up about maybe an additional crosswalk over in this area here. We'd be, we're willing to work with DPD and put a crosswalk wherever they, wherever they would recommend.
Yeah, that, that would be, I think, good. All right, thank you.
Any other board members, any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bob.
I only want to say I agree with, with every other board member I said. And I think this is going to be a really good project. To really change that whole block. And I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, can I just have one, clarify one thing from my notes from back in February?
Sure, absolutely.
There was a memo from Joe Janowitz and it was on page two, I guess it was. Um, and bullet item number one was the applicant identified the curbing along the street as granite. It should be confirmed that the intent is for this to be vertical granite as opposed to slope. And I did put yes, and I highlighted it. I, I, I believe we clarified that at that February meeting. I just want to make sure we're We did. We're going to put vertical granite there. Okay, good. No, I just wanted to make sure that was it's been a little while since we discussed that original site. Thank you.
Um, okay, anybody else on the board, any further comments? Anybody else? Okay, um, I don't have any comments. I think everything's been covered. Um, like I said, I had just a couple of comments in the bidding at the beginning, which was just for the traffic flow as well as I had you address the snow storage and the pedestrian access, access that Caleb mentioned. Those are my notes that came back from the February date. Um, and what was it? We also, um, oh yeah, okay. So just going back from my staff comment was, um, yeah, they also asked for more greater pedestrian access, which you addressed. And also, um, they requested the crosswalk, I think of Fletcher Street, that Mr. Lockhart just addressed.
Right.
So, um, I think I'm all set on that. And then we had one question, but I think, um, I think that was taken, I think Brian answered that a while ago. That was a question about the retaining wall, but I think we cleared that up at the, at the February meeting. Do you remember that, Brian?
Yeah, I think there was so that
Yeah, something that we got from, yeah, staff about the, a chief design. And then I think you addressed that to our satisfaction, if I remember correctly.
There was two, I mean, there's a proposed retaining wall, again, small, uh, you know, only about 18 inches in height here.
Right.
And I think there was some discussion about, uh, when we originally talked about trying to have some type of connection to Cushing Street. It's an existing retaining wall here that really precludes any vehicular connection. Uh, but again, we added that pedestrian connection that we've talked about.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm just trying to look back over and notice them like Jerry did. Okay, thank you. So at this time, there's no further comments from the board. Um, let me take a look here. Um, so basically we are looking for a request for a special permit in a site plan. So we would need two votes from the board this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. That the, the applicant will construct a, uh, a raised, uh, a triangle, um, with granite curbing at to discourage automobiles from taking a left-hand turn out of the parking lot closest to the eastern most entrance of the site. The, um, applicant will finalize the, uh, the signage and landscape, um, with, uh, subject to DPD approval. Uh, applicant agrees to, uh, vertical granite curbing, um, as identified, uh, along the, the, the street. And incorporate the, um, condition of the ZBA regarding the, um, the six-month monitoring and determination if additional parking was required. And also the applicant agrees to install a bike rack on the site as, uh, determined appropriate with the applicant.
What about the, um, crosswalk on Fletcher Street, Jerry?
Right.
Uh, the One that mentioned one up, yeah.
Yeah, the applicant would be, okay, work with DPD to determine the appropriateness and location of a crosswalk on Fletcher Street. Again, we didn't get any real, uh, we didn't get any real engineering input on that. So we're going to leave that, uh, between the applicant and DPD. If it is, if it can be determined as a safe location and where to put it, that's fine.
Right. So, so we have a motion on the floor for the site plan with several conditions. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Lockhart. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan is approved. So now we need a vote for the special permit.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as presented with the same conditions that apply to the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the special permit with the same conditions that were, um, just approved by the board on the site plan. But motion made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Both motions have been approved. Good luck, gentlemen. Wish you well with your site.
Mr. Board
Alan, how long does something like this for you take? I know you have the financing and all that. So how long does something like that take to get going through, just out of curiosity?
We have to go to the historic board now. I'm going to say within two or three months, we'd like to get rolling on this.
Okay, yeah. Cause I know you're saying you're trying to get some state and federal funding. I don't know if that holds you up or how long a period that takes.
We're working on it. We've been working on it for a year and a half, so.
So hopefully you made progress.
Yeah, we're making, we are making progress.
Okay, well, we wish you well. Good luck.
Very much, yeah.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, moving along, moving along on the agenda. The next matter on the agenda is a site plan review amendment and a special permit for 357 Puckett Street. Franco American Holding LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board for a site plan review amendment and a special permit approval for the above address. The applicant is seeking to increase the total number of units at the development from 53 units to 62 units. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district and requires a site plan review amendment under section 11.4 and special permit approval under section 12.1E. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, if I just may, I, I need to recuse myself on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so who do we have on the applicant for Puckett Street?
Um, it should be George Theodoro. I don't, I don't know if you can hear us. I see his name muted on here.
On map.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, this should be, uh, Jim Harrington, but you know what? This one was actually delayed because they forgot to put up, sorry, I mixed the two projects up. They forgot to, uh, put up the project sign and send out the O'Butters notice. So what they need is a continuance into the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, I happened to, I was up there this afternoon that I didn't notice where the sign was. So that was one of the questions I was going to ask.
Yeah, that, that would, that would be the answer.
Okay, so Peter, that they asked for this, uh, the next meeting, would that be sufficient? Is that what you're indicating?
Yeah, yeah, they asked for it at the next meeting.
Okay.
But I can't remember the date off the top of my head. I can pull it up here if you guys don't have it.
It'd be two weeks. Um, Jerry usually has that calendar in front of him.
June 7th.
June 7th.
Okay, yeah, that sounds right. Um, but yeah, they just needed the continuance. They, they, I mean, they're a pretty, uh, you know, good outfit over there. So they have all the information.
Yeah, it looks nice. I was already, it's come along very, very nice. Um, so Peter, they'll give them plenty of time for O'Butters notice as well.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be ready to go. I, I resent them all the information and we talked and I just said, make sure this is, uh, two weeks before the, uh, the next day.
Okay.
Yeah, dude.
All right. So we have a request for a continuance for two weeks on the 357 Puckett Street. I'll make a motion to approve the continuance.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Malovich. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion is allowed. So that matter is continued over. Okay, so now we have a couple of tree hearings. A West Lawn Tree Hearing, which is 305 Boston Road. pursuant to Mass General Law's chapter 87.5, the City of Lowell is proposing to remove two public shade trees at West Law Cemetery located at 305 Boston Road. The removal of the trees is required for the construction of new access road to a new area of the cemetery plot. The city is proposing tree replacement at a one-to-one ratio and the work will take place in 2021. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, my name is Shannon Goham, Superintendent of Parks for the City of Lowell. I am, uh, representing Christine Clancy tonight, who's feeling a little under the weather, weather, uh, today. So, uh, there's a slight change to this. We, um, we're just going to put a gravel road along that section of the cemetery. Uh, we need to do this road to lay out a new section of plots. We're going to try to maintain, uh, these trees in place as they are, but just in case through, we have the, the road grade or anything that we hit some roots and the trees do die, then we will replace them in, uh, with two, uh, trees in the same area.
So if you have a problem with the road, you, you think you, you'd have to still replace both of them? Or maybe you want to
Right now, we're not going to plan on cutting these down unless there's an issue with grading. And if we end up tearing up roots and detrimental to the health of the trees.
Okay.
But we're hoping right now, we're just going to put a gravel road in and we're hoping that that's not going to disturb the trees.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in favor?
Yes, I would like to speak in favor.
Go ahead, please. Say your name and address on record.
My name's Dave Ronow. I am in direct line with the, uh, road that you're going to be putting in. I live at, uh, unit 21478 Swan Street. And my concern may not be germane to the trees, but, uh, my concern is this road and the drainage is being addressed in this situation because we have been fighting floods for years now. And my concern is that if you put this road in, we're going to be looking at a runway for water directly into my basement. And I'm wondering what, if any, consideration to that. I can show you a picture, by the way, uh, that I have. Uh, I'm not very technically adept at Zoom. But if you care to see a picture of what we deal with.
I've been out there before.
So you know.
Yes, I've, I've been dealing with this for years. And you haven't had any problems the last two years, though, have you?
Well, you're putting a berm
Yep.
such as it is. But as I say, my concern is if you put this road in, all right, you're creating a runway for that water.
Well, it's going to be a pervious road.
I'm sorry?
It's going to be a pervious road. It's just gravel road. It's not hot-topped.
Uh huh.
So it will be pervious.
And how necessary really is this road?
It, we need to divide that, that section to create another section for the, the cemetery. We are quickly running out of space.
Yes, I understand that, uh, a major portion of that area under consideration has been purchased. Let me ask you this. In the event of heavy snowfall, how are you going to plow that? Is, is the snow going to be plowed to the end of that road up against the existing fence?
We could remove that, yeah, just to make sure it's not going to block the basin at the end.
Well, my concern, of course, is that if we have a fast melt, that what we've done in our basement to mitigate the flooding that we've had in the past, we're not going to be able to keep up with it.
Well, I'd like to say that I'll make sure that that snow is not plowed at the end, creating a blockage so that basin in the, uh, area.
And then another question, that tree that, uh, is it And then another question, that tree that is at the end of this road that you're gonna be built, will that be spared?
At the end of the road?
Yes, where your cul-de-sac is going.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna be touching that tree.
Okay. That's all I can think of at this point. I, I'd like to be cut to the breast of it, I, I know one of the commissioners on your board. And I will be taking advantage of that relationship.
Yeah, if you have any issues at all, please feel free to reach out.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, hi, my name is, I'm Garenke, I live at seventy-eight Swan Street, unit two fourteen, direct a butter to the property. And. I have those same concerns and. I just don't know why we really need another row, we walk frequently in the other cemeteries, you know, we're, we're good neighbors and. Everything works out, but there's, there's large pieces of the other cemeteries that don't have roads through them. You know, even like a path, something more ecological, you know, visually nicer than a road. Still accessible, but maybe paths and I don't know if you've been over to Carlisle State Park. Great Brooks State Park, but they did a beautiful job with the landscaping, you know, just to kinda, so I'm just wondering, you know, rather than just like, well, first, just to make it. Still accessible, but maybe some paths or something is, is a road.
We're gonna need to get equipment down there to, to load the caskets in. So you, you're gonna need the equipment big enough for vehicles and that's why it's, you know, the road isn't gonna be wide, it's not gonna be like a forty-foot street. By any means, it's gonna be like twenty feet wide tops. That's our plan.
You're saying gravel as, which gravel is different from the rest is paved.
Everything else is hot-topped, correct?
So this will be gravel?
Gravel, so it's pervious.
I'd like to add, if I may.
Go ahead.
I don't. And this really isn't germane to. The trees or the roads, but. I'd like to know what's being done about enforcing the. The hours that the cemetery is open to the public. And the. For lack of a better word, the trash that is just left all around that cemetery.
I'll tell you what, David, if you'd like to call me tomorrow, this has nothing to do with the tree hearing, I will gladly fill you in on that, we do have some plans here. For the future. If you'd like to call my office tomorrow and I can, we can discuss that then.
I will, I'll be in touch through one of your commissioners.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have something to, this is the only property that abuts residence, isn't it, in the cemeteries?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Really active cemetery, yes, for, for the city.
We're definitely looking for some cooperation here to, to make the community, you know. Livable. So that's, that's why we're here. George, did you have anything?
Yes, I was just gonna say that my concern is.
Excuse me, please, you can address this with the chair, okay, ma'am, I'll take it from here, sir, if you'd like to speak, will you please have your name and address for the record?
My name is George Brooks, I'm in unit, I'm in. Seventy-eight Swan Street, unit two twelve.
Thank you, sir.
And yes, I'm concerned about the road too also leading. That is a major pathway for water down there. And I can get those pictures up for you if you want me to share them, but they are. It's an area where we've spent many times. Trying to pump it out and the problem is so much water comes down. We have to, we're pumping it out onto the actual area where it's coming from. And last couple of years, yes, it's been better because we've been in a drought. And that has helped immensely, but all we need is a bad year and we're gonna be flooded again. And that's my big concern.
But then the last two years since I became in charge of cemeteries, we also cleared out that basin drain that has been blocked for years. We found it up deep into the woods and we cleared that, that out, so I think that was causing ninety percent of the problem. So since we did that two years ago, I haven't had any complaints, so I don't believe there has been any flood and since that has been cleared out.
I have some pictures I'd love to show you since then.
Of flooding?
Yes.
And you, no one's ever made a complaint?
I believe they've complained, I think they've landed on death here, so no, you know, not, no disrespect intended and, you know, maybe they weren't directed at you, you know, directed to you. But I'll show you some pictures when we have a chance to meet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, anybody else, anybody else like to speak on this project?
Yeah, just have a, a couple more things to say. The trees add shield from the lights of the cars. You know, to the various. Lights that are put at the graves. So, you know, that's a nice buffer to keep the trees there and. The trees create also a barrier between the residents and the mourners, you know, to give them some privacy because. You know, this big tree at the end here, I mean, I'm still gonna put my umbrella up and, you know, live here, if there's, you know, a funeral or not, of course respectfully, but, you know. You know, we, we're gonna live here. So important for the trees that act as a buffer.
Shannon, so I know that if you take these down, you will be replacing them, so.
That is correct.
But you said, you said somewhere.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm speaking, I'm speaking right now, if you know, if I may, please, thank you. So Shannon, do you have an idea of where they might be replaced?
They would go in, in the direct proximity of where they are located right now. So they probably just be a little bit wider out from the road.
Okay.
Yeah, but they'd be up above where they are right now.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because whenever they take a tree down, they have to replace them, by our standards, by the city.
Okay, the initial notice said somewhere in the cemetery, didn't say.
That's why I asked the question, yeah, so that's why I asked the question where.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, because with our rules and regulations, depending on the size of the tree, it dictates how much they have to replace. They try to do it within the city, but obviously they're indicating here they want to do it in the cemetery, so hopefully, as this gentleman indicated, they're trying to keep it very close into that location to hope still create the same buffer zone.
Okay, and hopefully they won't need to be taken down because we watched them grow and they're a nice height, so.
Yeah, I'm sure they're gonna try to save them the best they can, that's.
Yes.
Hopefully they go right, Shannon?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anybody else like to speak in the God City's hearing, tree removal, yes, name and address, please, for record?
George Brooks, seventy-eight Swan Street, unit two twelve.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Reason, I, I just wanted to find out, is this road gonna be a permanent road or is it just temporary?
I, I would say it's gonna be a permanent road.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else?
He's got the picture up.
Okay, Shannon, can you see that? I don't know if that's your first name or your last name.
That's my first name.
Oh, Shannon, take a look, that's, this is the tree right outside our house and you'll see, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you, yep. What year was that, David?
Excuse me?
What year was that?
Two thousand nineteen. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, that was two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, so I, I started two thousand, April two thousand nineteen, so we made that repair probably in sometime over the summer. So that must have been January, February. Prior to that basin being fixed.
This is our backyards.
Yep.
We, we don't wanna repeat this, we really don't wanna repeat this because this is backbreaking to have to clean up a, a basement. So. We'd like to be kept abreast of what kind of flood mitigation. You propose, maybe a berm along that fence would go a long way to helping us.
I have, we have done that.
But to extend it, to extend it right up, right up to Swan Street if need be.
Okay, yeah, I just said, we can, we can get together, David, now I can get to you with all, everybody and we can discuss this further.
Okay, and here's our, our pond. Okay, all right, I've. I'm satisfied.
Does anybody else like to speak on this matter? Okay, anybody else, anybody else, okay, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members if they have any questions. Any board members questions? So basically, what Shannon said is that at this point, they don't know if they're gonna have to remove the trees, they're gonna put in a pervious surface. And if they do have to move the trees at either one of the trees, they will make it as close approximately to it is now, am I correct by summarizing that, Shannon?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so. And then if you do have to replace them, there's any, yeah, we said it'd be a one-to-one ratio and it'd be basically as close as you came to where it is now, okay? Okay, so what's the request on the board for the request for the tree removals on the cemetery if necessary for the trees to be taken out?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Malovich.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Lockhart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes, any opposition? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Good luck on those, Shannon, and hopefully, maybe you won't have to take them down after all, so, thank you. Moving along, we have another tree hearing, let me pull this one up, just give me a second here. The next one is for a proposed tree removal. And let me get this one. And this is Crowley Stadium Tree Hearing, four twenty-four Douglas Road. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter eighty-seven point five, the city of Lowell proposing to remove eighteen public shade trees at Crowley Stadium. Located at the above draft address of the eighteen trees. Three were dead or unhealthy and three are over twenty-four inches in diameter. The trees are being removed as part of a track rehabilitation project, which will begin in, on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The city is proposing a tree replacement of a one-to-one for trees less than twenty-four inches in diameter. And a two-to-one for trees greater than twenty-four inches in diameter. Can we hear from the applicant on this matter, please?
And again, Shannon Cohen, City Lowell Parks Department Superintendent, Representative for Christine Clancy. So we're in the process of putting a, we just put a brand-new athletic turf field in. And we're in the process of putting the new track in surrounding that turf field, at least finish up inside of the stadium. And right now, where these trees are located, they're extremely detrimental to the track, this sap dropping on the track all the time. During windy days, the dead branches are falling off. It's dangerous for the people using the track and so we like to, to remove these trees prior to the construction of the track. And then relocate them outside of the stadium. In, in the future.
Look, Shannon, I noticed, when I was there today, so when I come down Douglas Road, coming down Douglas Road heading to Roger Street, I take a left, I pull in there, I pass the ice skating rink there. When I pull up to the first booth, most of the trees that I noticed that had the advertisements on them were basically right there, which are behind the scoreboard if I'm, as I pulled up, am I correct on that?
Correct, so they're basically, the vast majority located between the two ticket booths.
Right.
On the inside of the fence.
Of the fence, right.
Yes.
So basically, to those trees causing problem onto the track area?
Correct.
Okay, I got you, all right, I hear you, okay, yeah, I know you say there's a lot of people out there, it was a nice day there, working on the track field and everything else. Okay, so from the pictures you gave us, the majority of there, and then there'd be a few more to the right after the opening for the entrance, correct?
Yes.
And the pictures that you sent to us, okay. I got you, so the trees are causing havoc onto the track, oh, okay, all right. Okay, it was just a point of clarification for myself, thank you. Anything further you want to add to this, Shannon, or?
Pretty straightforward, so wastewater is planning on. Building a holding tank under the Crowley Stadium parking lot. That's one of the reasons we've been holding off on repairing that parking lot. So in the process of doing that redesign of the parking lot, there's gonna be islands in there and so that's where we'll be relocating all these trees to, on the outside of the stadium. Just to spruce up the outside of the stadium.
Okay, so that parking lot's gonna be repaved and then, like you say, you'll have some islands in there and the trees replaced in it, okay?
It's not gonna be just a big giant open lot like it is now for, with the free-for-all people cut through, it'll be organized somewhat.
Yeah, the only trees I see there now is the old Christmas trees, right? Okay, so, thank you. Anybody this evening wanna speak on the God City's project for the tree hearing on Douglas Road? Anybody like to speak for four twenty-four Douglas Road, Crowley Stadium? Anybody for Douglas Road, Crowley Stadium tree removal? Hearing none. Any of the board members have any questions?
I, I just have a comment, Chairman.
Sure, absolutely, Caleb, go ahead.
So I'm not trying to hijack the, the parking lot redesign, but I think that having more trees to, to soften the, the harscape against the, the. Abutting residents on Douglas Road will be ideal. And, and so just a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have anything, just any comment? Not, what's the, what's to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
You have a second?
Okay, motion by Mr. Malovich, second by Caleb, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair vote yes, any opposition? Hearing none, that motion's allowed, that is approved, good luck, sir, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a good night.
You as well.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have on is a modification. Let's see, minor modification, fourteen McIntyre Street. Mad Jack Seven LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board for minor modification of the previous site plan review. And special permit application at fourteen McIntyre Street. The applicant is seeking permission to modify their project to reduce the number of proposed dwelling units. From eight dwelling units to six dwelling units, the property is in the neighborhood. Business and urban neighborhood mixed-use zoning district, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodoro here for the applicant. And also with me here tonight is Matt Hammer of Lamplex. We were here before the board in April, where we first presented this modification to the board. As you know, this, this is regarding a prior approval of a project. In which this lot was subdivided into Lot A, which contained the pre-existing three-story building and Lot B. This modification refers to Lot B, which, in which was prior, received prior approval by the board. For the construction of six residential condominiums. All would be located within one building. That project, we went over it at the last meeting, the units were gonna be approximately sixteen feet wide, comprising eight units. We presented this modification in which the units are gonna be twenty-one feet wide, larger units. And decrease the number of units to eight. At the same time, by doing that, we decrease the parking requirements and still meet the minimum parking. We believe that this modification, as far as the size of the units, are better quality units. Better able to, better residence for people and, and better for the developer for resale value. It became very clear at that last meeting. And that a great deal of attention was taken by the board. With the previous approval process for the design review of that approved project. And how extremely important it was to have a very, very good design of these condominiums. And that became evident to us and we went back, we continued it. And that became evident to us, and we went back, we continued it, and we redesigned it. We redesigned it in a fashion to, as best we can, make it similar to the prior project. Not in all respects, but to make a better project, to make a better design, to break up the roof and to provide, provide different textures throughout it. So with that, it is our hope that we're, if we don't get here tonight with this board, we hope we're chipping away at it to get an approval for our modification. So with that, I'd like Matt to go over those changes with the board that we made to show you what we've done to seek your approval on it. Matt?
Yep, I'm gonna put up the can everyone see the front elevation perspective?
Yes. Great. So do we have this, so last time, we had a little confusion between the front and the rear, so tonight we're all on the same page for the front?
We are on the same page. We made that correction, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
All the elevations on the front and the rear. So yes, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the front facing Marshall Street. For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, ten George Street, Lowell. So this design is very similar to the prior design that was approved for the eight units. The, we added, so I'm gonna go through each material change to the site that, that brings us to this plan. So we added the stockhouse dormers to the roof line, where the prior design did not have those in. And if, if you go to the the prior approval of the front facade, it's, it's in line with those stockhouse dormers that were part of that prior design. We also, still looking at the front facade, we added some material changes to the siding, which was also shown on the prior design to give it some depth to the architectural siding features of the building. And we've done that along the front here. All of the windows are wrapped with trim, and that's shown on this plan. We also, on the side entry, made that side entry, so when you come out of that front, well, it's a front entry off the side of the building for the end units, and those are now facing Marshall Street. So those will also have walkways out to the sidewalk from those entrances, and that's indicative of each end unit. One of the comments was, we wanted that to be roofed, and we put a roof over those entrances as well. Additionally, we added trash enclosure units for all the units, and those are on the front here at the, at the bottom grade level. And that's also indicative of the prior design that also had those same features. We had the architect utilize the prior approval when redesigning this front entrance to incorporate to the best possible those same elements of the front facade design. And there's also an overhang element on these four units coming out of the front entrance. And that front entrance on those four units are recessed within the building. And the reason for that was, in order to get out of the units and not have the stairways going over the property line, the only way to do that was to recess those units into the front, so they could come down, make a turn, and come back out, so they would wouldn't go over the property line to Marshall Street. Going to the rear, we also added some elements there in terms of different siding elements, as well as trim elements around all the windows on the rear of the building. And those are the material changes incorporated from the comments that were provided at the last meeting. And I can put it over to George.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so we've, we've gone through the plans to make some of the, the design of, of these units and, and similar to what was previously done, and to make them far more aesthetically appealing. And so we would, you know, like to know if we could seek your approval for the modification of these plans for these six units, as opposed to the eight that were approved back in December of two thousand and twenty.
Hey, thank you. Any of the board members have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Is Attorney Theodore, and Matt, if you could look at the memo on April fourteenth, Peter Trumpus?
And I believe that was supposed to be May fourteenth.
Yeah, you're right.
That's correct. Yep.
Yeah, it should be May. The memo's updated. I, if we could start, I guess, with, with item number four, because I, even for clarification, I think Caleb was the member that brought up the side entrances, and although this comment says it's not addressed, I know any explanation. You said you turned it around. I don't know. Well, Caleb, I guess I let you talk about that, but I don't know if that's what you had in mind, or?
I believe Matt is correct. It's turned around. So could be just, it's hard to read from the plans, or because like, in your perspective here, it's clearly starting to
Yeah, just wanna make sure we're, we're all seeing the same thing here. I guess the almost elevation, narrow shingle bump, awesome. I guess items four and five, I think we're looking at the rear of the building with the, with the offset from the garage. I guess if that was the front, that looks a little odd. The way that I understand where they're, they're coming from on that, but I know, Matt, the other, the other forward-facing one at an angle like that, you can't really see the offset. Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess that they were referring to on that rear elevation. With a bump out is, doesn't line up with the garage door and the, you know, overlaps to the, it, it's heavy towards the left on on the, on the ones on the left-hand side and to the right on the right-hand side. I get where they're talking about the rhythm of it. That just seems a little, I'm assuming that's from the, based on the internal layout. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, if you look at sheet eight of twenty-two, the floor plan, or just any of the floor plan sheets. Oh, I can bring it up. I'm sorry. I forgot I could show you that right here. So, yeah, sorry about that. So you'll see that the, the protrusion of the wall to give it depth off of the building is really structured around the stairway here as well.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
And that's where it carries in. So the, I like to be able to say, yeah, we could just widen that pop out. But that's, and I can't speak for the architect on that specifically, but that's where I see that to be a reason why.
Right.
That's the case.
Yeah.
And then when you go to the the garage, the garage bays, the architect's trying to fit in a garage that can't be, you know, that needs to have framing members between that and that, the garage and the door. So it, yes, it's not ideal that it's not perfectly aligned, but it just so happens that that's the way that it turned out.
Yeah.
Is it, I, I'm just a thought here. How about, how about connecting the bump outs to, like, into free pairs, like, you know? So I mean, I see the, the second floor plan. I mean, that beyond the stairs, can you extend that so that go to end, so that we have like, the first two one connects into one, and then the third and fourth one connect into one. So, I mean, at least that would soften the misalignment. I mean, it's more material too, but you also gain a few square feet.
I mean, I can talk to the architect. So I see what you're, so, so Caleb, what you're saying is, is that this, these two gaps here would be removed, and that would be one continuous bump.
Not necessarily, but like, well, I think that we can play different combinations. You can do two together or three together, right? So, like, let's say from the left-hand side, like, the first one with the second one.
You could, so what you're, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Caleb, but I think what you're saying is to remove this gap, combine these two as one continuous bump out.
Yep. Oh, just maybe make it slightly less.
And do the and do the same for all three sets.
If, if, if the board thinks that that might soften, you know, the misalignment.
It would soften. It would add a little bit more symmetry. Just, it does look odd, I have to say. I know that you look at it closely.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Yeah.
And I don't think that that's a problem, and I could confer with the client on that, and if it was, we could then come back to the board. But I can say that I think we can do that as part of this, as a condition. And if it wasn't acceptable to the client who's not gonna be with us tonight on this meeting prior to a prior, he has a conflict, then we could come back, but I think that that would be okay to, to connect these structural units.
Because you can see, Matt, you'd be, you'd be the same distance on the right, left-hand side on one grouping, same overhang on the right and left on the next grouping, and in the same, you know, so, yeah.
I don't think there's an easy way to solve this.
I, and I, I do know that they do coincide with the foundation. It transfers through to the foundation, so I would have to check with the client on that. Yeah, I'm not the architect, obviously. So I, I'd have to check with the architect and the client to see if that's feasible.
And Matt, could we look at the, the front elevation again at an angle, because it gives us some, they get a better sense of the depth on the, and that would be the, yeah, right here. So I guess it was, it was a good question. What's a, what's a little I understand, based on the, the width of the, of the depth of the units, is there any way those stairs could come straight down? I know they're awfully high, and again, that comes back into the internal design. And then, so now you need more stairs to get down to the ground level, so if you're trying to put that facing the street, you know, you'd be out into the sidewalk, but I guess the question was to, in, in the, the DPD memo is, based on the, the depth of the reciprocals, if they're going to fit, like, the city trash bins, you know, that's, I, it's hard to get a feeling of the depth from the, from the sidewalk to the foundation.
So I did look at that.
Yeah.
I did, I did look at that, and actually, going back, I just, the client is watching this on, on, on a computer, and we can do that combined bump out in the back.
Okay.
Okay, so that's good. Relative to your question about the, the, the city trash totes, I went online. We have three feet from the face of the building to the property line.
Okay.
And I know that those totes will fit into that trash enclosure without going over the property line.
Now, is it possible to put that entrance even in a little further to have those steps come straight towards the street? Because it still doesn't have a front, it still doesn't have that front facade feel to it, with the steps coming down like that.
Well, that was a that was a solution to our grading issue from the finished floor out to the street. I thought it was a, it was a good solution for that.
I mean, it gets you to the ground level, but it's not exactly, you know, it doesn't have a townhouse, townhouse look of a, of a, of a city development facing the street. You know, you know what I mean?
It was really our only solution to the, to the problem. It gave us flexibility to adjust the grades, to get out to the street.
Now, how did the other design end up with the front, with a narrower, they were narrower buildings, right?
No, it was the same depth. It was the same distance off the
Was it the floor not, the floor level wasn't as high?
Nope, it was, it was, it was still having the same floor elevation.
Dylan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Matt. Dylan, do you, we have, can we bring up the prior, the plan that was approved before?
I have it.
Yeah. Oh, could, could you bring it up, Matt?
Yep.
Please.
See, they're three feet off here.
Yeah, I know. Do you have the elevation, Matt?
Yep.
See, those steps are coming straight down to the street.
I know, but it didn't work.
So those were plans that weren't any good. We've run into that before, haven't we, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we have, Mr. Fisher. Yes, we have.
So that was, that was Cole, Cole Jack or Tim Juzak, who you know, that was his primary problem, and his solution to that was to recess the entrance back in to ensure that there was ample room to get, and you didn't wanna just try to come out from the side and just land on the sidewalk either.
Right.
Wanted to have a little bit of a walkway, a little bit of depth, which was that three feet, which is, as you know, isn't a lot of room.
Right.
To ensure that the, the finished floor, coming out of the finished floor, was gonna be code compliant out to the sidewalk on Marshall.
Right.
Which, as you may or may not, is a variable grade from one end to the other.
Yeah. Well, this is a dilemma, isn't it? I really don't like those front stairs. I mean, those look like back decks. And, you know, for a city, for a downtown development, we, I mean, typically you Matt, based on the, how many, I mean, how many rises we got here?
So if you look at, I'm gonna show you something, Jerry, right here. I'm gonna show you something on this plan set, and it's right here. Oops.
This is the prior plan set.
Yes, it is. If you'll notice. If you'll notice the grading here, okay?
Right.
You know, we have, you know, about elevation one twenty point five, and then down at the end here, it goes down to like nineteen.
Two feet of foot, yeah.
So, the nice thing about the way that this recessed stairway works for the developer is it allows for the fluctu- fluctuations in grades to be compensated with that distance of that three feet with the walkway, and then to, and, and then to come up the stairs, so, you know, two of them will have one less step.
Right.
Right, right. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Yep. And that's.
No, I hear you.
And if you want to know a project that was similar, it was on Lawrence Street. The one we did, it, I, I believe it was seven or eight units right on the Concord River there, on Lawrence Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that we called.
Sometime ago, and that's how that solution was solved, is you push the recess entrance way back in. And you, and we were able to calculate to make sure that when you come off of that last step, you're in the, you're not on the right of way.
Right, right. No, understood there, I understand what you're trying to, um, solve, and, and I know that that solves that issue, I guess what I was, Matt, what I was envisioning is, you gotta love that the technology, right? If we, i- i- I don't know if you can see that, but that's the old mother hubbub.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sure.
You see how those all fade?
And that's probably because they have. Yeah, they have six feet or seven feet back from the right way.
Right.
And this site was constricted on the backside in order to get the aisle and to get you swung into that garage.
Yeah, I saw that, you got the twenty-two feet on the, on the back, I'm looking at that, so, yeah, no, I, I understand. Um, no way to bring that elevation down a little bit, right? You would still wouldn't get your, uh, you know, your, your floor level, floor elevation down, no?
Yeah, the driving elevations are actually from the back.
Okay, that's what's driving.
Going eight, giving yourself seven and a half feet clearance within the garage.
Gotcha, yeah.
And then you're a, a foot, one point three feet above the top of foundation to the finished floor, and that's what sets you on that finished floor, that you can't escape.
Right. All right, well.
It, and then we have that challenge of the building behind us.
Yep.
And then there's a, there's a severe drop on a portion of the rear of the site. So we're not able to manipulate the rear of the site too much at all.
Yeah, I was looking at that as, as an option and came to that conclusion, unfortunately, I'm looking at that. Well, we certainly have explored every different.
I mean, I can't, I can't say this is gonna be a big improvement to that neighborhood regardless.
No, I, I, and, and, and this is from the original design, you know, I, I, I like what we've come, it's just if, if we could have, if we could have solved that issue, I think it would have been just, like I said, I just, I, I can't imagine anybody listening to me talk right now, doesn't understand that visually, it just looks a little, you don't, I mean, you don't see, uh, you're, uh, most city development townhouses, I mean, most of the time, the entrance and the stairs come right down to the sidewalk, you know, straight, it's just much more welcoming, it looks better. So, but I.
I can say, I can say you do have that, sorry, I interrupted you again.
No, no, that's okay, no, no, no.
But what you do have on that front entrance is you have that nice window.
Yeah, no, I hear next to the door, yep.
Right, and that window allows you to look out into the street, right, from what, inside the unit, when that may have been taken up by a door.
Right.
Right, so that gives you more visual from inside the house out to the street, even though it's a side entrance door. It gives you more light coming in instead of that being blocked by a door.
Yeah, oh, I understand, I'm thinking more of a street, the streetscape, you know, with the, with the stairs coming down uh, right to the sidewalk, that's, that's, that's really what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah. And it's gonna be nice, cause it's covered.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, yeah, understand that, that won't be, uh, that'll, that'll save you some shoveling in the winter time, that's for sure.
Yep.
I understood there, but again, I just. All right, no, that's, uh, and then I'm assuming, Matt, there was a comment about the trim on the rear, it, it's just from the architect's perspective, they didn't, they didn't repeat the trim on the windows, I don't imagine that changed. There was no, enough with trim, yeah.
You could make that as a condition, all the windows will.
Yeah, true, yeah, I understand. All right, thank, thank you, thanks, Matt, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vichet. Do we still have Peter with us, who wrote the memo from May fourteen?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Peter, um, from any discussion that you heard so far today, and from your memo, is anything you'd like to add, or just, um, just giving you the opportunity if you want to say anything?
Uh, no, that was pretty good, we do, so the comment memos, I mean, I write the majority of it, any of the architectural notes, though, uh, we also have another coworker, Jess Wilson, who has a background in that. Uh, who is not here tonight, so some of the stuff about bump outs and the rhythm of the shingling and whatnot. Uh, uh, she may have been able to provide a little bit more info, but, uh, you know, I think she'll be happy with what was, uh, what was discussed here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any of the board members, any further comments?
I'm chairman.
Yes, Caleb.
Yeah, I, I, I do wish, uh, Jessica's, um, say, uh, interpret the, or explain, uh, um, the com- number six on the comments, um, regarding the vertical elements, I, I, um, I know it's kind of, might a bit contradicts what I suggested earlier, um, and I do want to he- hear her star, her, her, um, you know, from her expertise, so, um, um, I'm wondering if, like, if the architect can work with the staff to improve on that, instead of basing it on, say, my, uh, my street s- street knowledge of, uh, architecture, so. Um, so, so, I don't know if the applicant will be open to that suggestion or not. You know, on the, on the, um, shingles, um, arrangements or texture, just to work a little bit with stuff to, uh, see what can be further improved.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that that would be an issue, this is a, uh, George Theodore, or what, you know, I think we could work with staff with respect to that and the style, uh, and, uh, the exterior decorative trim.
Thank you, and appreciate that, and, and in, in my eye, it, it looks pretty good already, and, and, um, and I appreciate the, all the effort, the applicant and the architects have put into it. Um, that's it for me, uh, chairman.
Matt, um, like, you based on the agreement what Caleb said, um, to work with on, about, you know, on the comments on number five and six?
Yeah, w- we can, and, uh, if you wanted to put a, can, I, you know, I have confirmed with the client uh, on the, on the rear bil- of the building to combine these two elements together for each of the, the sets of two.
Um, chairman, I would suggest, like, instead of conditioning that specifically, I, I will prefer leaving it to the, um, the staff with, uh, the architectural background, uh, but that's a suggestions that, you know, come from us.
And, and, and Mr. Chair, we can, we can, uh, do that and work with Ms. Wilson on that.
Okay, so, Matt, you understand what, 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 what your question was then on, on number six and five, basically, then?
Yes, we, okay, do. Yeah.
Okay. Any other thing is, yeah, go ahead, please.
Oh, I, I, and I, you, you're probably gonna go there.
I was just mentioning, we started to work with the stormwater, right, which is no, I mean wastewater facility? Yeah.
But I, I think what we're determining too, right, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that whether or not this is a material, um,
Yeah, correct, yeah. I think we have to do it in two different phases, because one, it's a site plan and special premise, we have to vote on both. Because we voted on both last time. So whether it's a change to one and not the other, or change to both, um, so I think we require two different votes.
Yeah, and, and the first vote would be whether or not it's a substantial material change.
Correct, and that would be on both of them, and then would we accept any modi- any modifications with any conditions if we did?
Yeah.
And the first one is, do we, if, if, if we feel some material change, then it'd have to come back to a public hearing.
I mean, myself personally, I, I, with, with what, with the applicant came back with, this is more in line with the original plan, um, and I, it's actually fewer units, um. I mean, the only, the, the only thing I, I, again, is, uh, is the stairs, but there are just some real physical challenges there, so. Um, I, I certainly, I would not consider this a substantial or material change, I would uh, I would be willing to put that in a motion, Mr. Chairman, unless, uh, you have any other.
Okay, could I just have, um, you do so, um, if regards, and the vote would be either to the special permit or the site plan, and we can do them one at a time, if you don't mind, Jerry?
Yeah, so that would be for the site plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Vichet indicating that, um, that the board does not feel that this is a substantial and material change, as what before is this evening for modification. So we have a motion by Mr. Vichet for the site plan.
Oh, second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Vichet, and second by Mr. Malovich, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, chair vote yes, so now we need a motion in regards to the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that, uh, motion as well, that, uh, this does not represent a substantial or material change to the special permit.
Okay, do we have a second on that? Second again by Mr. Malovich, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The chair votes yes, um, any, and, and anybody opposition? Hearing, hearing, um, none, those, um, two can, two votes are uh, approved, and at this point in time, if the board wants to make a motion to, um, modify the project, or to put any other additional conditions on, that would be, um, decide for the board to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion for this, the special permit first, because this is more applicable to the special permit regarding the architectural elements. Uh, and then.
Okay.
And the condition that I would, uh, put on there is that the applicant would work with, uh, DPD to finalize architectural elements uh, of the, uh, of the project.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Vichet to work with the, um, planning staff on the architectural matters. So we have a second on that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Lockhart, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, chair vote yes, any opposition? Hearing none, that motion is approved. So now we have a, to deal with the site plan.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just, uh, make a motion to approve this site plan incorporating that condition, um, and it becomes, you know, they still have to comply with stormwater management, but that, o- obviously that the applicant, uh, will, uh, um, comply with, uh, uh, engineering regarding the stormwater management.
And that was, and, and the, was that the same as the architectural, Jerry?
That would be, yes, correct.
Okay, so, so the same as the special permit with the additional with the wastewater, for the, for the site plan, correct?
The, uh, the, uh, stormwater.
Yeah, yes, okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Vichet, we have a second?
Second. Oh.
Okay, that was the second, okay, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, chair vote yes, any opposition? Hearing none, so, um, both matters have been approved, we wish you well and good luck. Obviously, Matt, if you have any questions on the architectural, any issues come up on that, you can always bring it back before the board, and we can make it considered if need be.
Okay, great, I appreciate everything.
Yeah, that way, if you have a question or anything, come back and come back before us, and that way, um, after we get some further input from the architectural one, there are many differences, I'm sure the board will be happy to entertain or look, look at what the request may be, so.
And, and likewise, Mr. Chairman, just for anybody listening, if, if DPD is not satisfied with what they were able to work out, then that would come back before us.
Sure. Yeah, so that way, yeah, there's not an agreement on it for the architectural, then it'll come back before us, that's right, because the board always holds the final decision. Yes, well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome, counsel, elect, thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good evening, um, moving along on, on the agenda, do we have any notices from any of the boards, or any comments, many board members?
Yes, I have an historic board, uh, update. Uh, we ended up on May tenth with a pretty busy meeting, we had seven applications for various things ranging from rooftop solar panels on the bootbells, uh, a residential renovation in the acre of thirteen units to look at, some roof and parapet repairs, uh, chimney removal, all kinds of small things like that, that, uh, when they occur in the historic district, they have to be voted on. Um, and, and the other important thing is the mural policy update, um, was presented to the council on May eleventh. And the information I have tonight is that there will be a public hearing on May twenty-fifth, which would bring that whole thing to fruition. That may have changed, I haven't got the latest, but it's May twenty-fifth for a public hearing on the mural policy, as I described in the last meeting. Our next meeting is June fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Anything else from any board members?
So, Chairman, I just wanted to recognize with, the, uh, department has a new head, right?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's right, and I go.
Yeah, Miss, Miss, yes, Christine McCollum, we wish her well.
Yes.
We've had a history of dealing with her in the past, we look forward to working with her again in the future. So, yeah, that, it's a good addition, so, um, and, we have any further comments, anything from staff? From Peter and Dylan, anything to comment on further?
No comments, I'll just give a reminder that, I believe that the next meeting Fran is planning to present the information related to the updated, um, zoning rules from the governor's housing choice.
Perfect. Okay, all right, thank you, um, okay, if no further comments, we can make a motion to adjourn. Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, chair vote yes, we have adjourned, good night, and thank you very much, everybody, have a good night.
Take care, everyone.
Good night, good night. Enjoy the nice weather.
Yes.
Ah, you got it.
And go Bruins.
They're ahead two to one.
Oh, good, 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 good.
I think that's what I saw on my phone.
Hopefully they can hold it.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, bye, have a good night.